My name is Scott Phillips and I'm the chairman of the board. And we will start with a roll call to account for the members of the board present. When you hear your name, please say aye. Mr. Schweitzer. Ms. Panera. Mr. Hartman.
Aye.
Mr. Halupka.
Aye.
Ms. Halford.
Aye.
Ms. Wolfson. Mr. McGinnis.
Aye.
Mr. Heckman.
Aye.
Mr. Heinel. I see Mr. Heinel listed. Mr. Heinel? Mr. Heinel? If I could get a confirmation? While I'm waiting on Mr. Heinel, Mr. Warren? I see Mr. Warren listed. Mr. Todd Warren?
Here, I'm saying here.
Okay, I'm assuming Mr. Heinel, are you also saying here? We can't hear you? If so, if you could respond in the chat. Okay, very good. So we, we, uh, Mr. Perlo? Didn't hear Mr. Perlo or Mr. Bear? All right, so. We have Aquar. Thank you all very much. And actually, this will be a relatively brief meeting. Please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
And to the republic for which it stands. A nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. And I've heard Ms. Wolfson. Ms. Wolfson, you joined us?
Yes.
Okay, very good.
Are you guys hearing me now or no?
Yes, we can hear you clearly, Todd. Thank you. All right, so first, I'd like to welcome Mr. Chris Davis, who you all can't see, I don't think, who is the new staff person for the Baltimore County Planning Board. Miles has moved on and Chris is stepping into his shoes. So welcome, Mr. Davis. And we thank you for providing support tonight. Challenge on your very first night as the Planning Board Support Person. But thank you. Are there any changes to the agenda as published? Mr. Davis?
No, Mr. Chairman, there's no changes to the agenda as published.
Okay. In the September 24th email, you received draft minutes of the September 17th, 2020 meeting. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the draft minutes?
Yes.
Had an opportunity to review the minutes? I see head shaking, nodding. Very good. Are there any corrections, additions, um, or modifications to the minutes of the September 17th, 2020 board meeting? Any suggestions, changes? Okay, if not, I will entertain a motion to accept the minutes as circulated.
Motion.
Thanks, sir.
Mr. Warren, Mr. Warren moved, Mr. Hartman second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Both have the same right. Motion carries. All right. Recent county council legislation of interest to the board. Mr. Davis, please fill us in on any recent legislation passed by the county council since our last meeting.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, there's one item, um, which is Resolution 94-20, which is for the Maryland Agricultural Land Preservation Foundation. And it is a resolution, uh, to approve certain applications for the sale of development rights easements on property located on farms that meet the state criteria for application in accordance with agricultural article section 2-509 of the Annotated Code of Maryland.
Very good. There are no questions of Mr. Davis. Thank you, sir. The chair will entertain a motion to adjourn because that concludes our business, Planning Board meeting business for this evening. Is there a motion?
So moved.
It's been moved?
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second by Mr. Heckman. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries. This meeting is adjourned, but please do not move. It is 5:02. And we are ready to begin our public hearing. So I will welcome everyone. Uh, this is a public hearing that I am now going to call to order. My name is Scott Phillips and I'm the chairman of the Baltimore County Planning Board. Tonight, the planning board will conduct this public hearing for two items. First, the board will hear testimony on the Baltimore County Water and Sewer Plan 2020 triennial review. Immediately following, the board will hear testimony on the proposed definition of dormitories to the Baltimore County zoning regulations. Starting out, I would like to take note of the board members present on the call. When you hear your name, please say aye. Mr. Schweitzer? Did not hear Mr. Schweitzer. Um, Chris, I can't hear on this side. Am I on mute or is there something else going on? Hold on.
I'm hearing you well, Mr. Chairman.
You're hearing me. I couldn't hear you. I'm using a different device, so I'm, uh, I'm, I'm technology challenged, which doesn't usually happen. All right, let's go down the list. Mr. Schweitzer, are you here? Ms. Panera? Mr. Hartman?
Here.
Mr. Halupka? Mr. Halupka, thought you were here?
Here.
Thank you. Ms. Halford?
Here.
Ms. Wolfson? Mr. McGinnis?
Here.
Mr. Heckman?
Here.
Mr. Heinel? Mr. Perlo? I'll take that as a yes. Mr. Perlo? Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Bear? Very good. So let us begin. At the board's September 17th, 2020 meeting, Ms. Erin McInnes Strile, Ms. Lisa Ico Department of Public Works introduced the Water Supply and Sewer Master Plan 2020 triennial review. Ms. McInnes Strile and Ms. Icoats are here to further present the 2020 triennial review to the board. After Ms. McInnes Strile and Ms. Icoats have finished their presentation, I will call on those who have registered to testify on this topic. Please join me in welcoming Ms. McInnes Strile and Ms. Icoats.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Uh, we have a short presentation that Chris is gonna pull up.
No, not yet. There we go.
All right. All right, good evening, everyone. I'm Erin McInnes Strile from the Baltimore County Department of Public Works Water Design Section. And I'll be providing some information on the Baltimore County Water Supply and Sewer Plan 2020 triennial review. Next slide. Right, there's two main regulations that pertain to the Water and Sewer Master Plan. Uh, section 9-503 of the Annotated Code of Maryland requires Baltimore County to adopt a plan for the provision of adequate water supply and sewage throughout the county and that this governing body shall review its county plan at least once every three years in accordance with the schedule set by the department, which falls in 2020. Uh, COMAR 26M301 requires that this water and sewer plan be consistent with the county's comprehensive planning. And this regulation also has very specific requirements for the chapters, tables, maps, and descriptions of the system that must be included in the document. Due to these requirements, the document as a whole doesn't change very much every three years. So I'll try and highlight the portions of the document that have changed in 2020. Next slide. So Chapter 1, um, has the goals and organization. And it only changes when the master plan has been updated. And master plan 2020 was current in 2017, 14, and 2011 in those triennial reviews. So there haven't been any changes to this chapter in the 2020 document. It's very short anyway and requires a statement that the Water and Sewer Plan is consistent with the county's comprehensive plan with more detail provided in Chapter 2. It also includes information on how county government is organized as it relates to the management of water and sewer plans, um, a description of the metropolitan district boundary, and the annual amendment cycle, which you all are familiar about. Next slide. Chapter 2 has some background information. And it describes master plan 2020 and the relationship between the county's water and sewer planning, the Erdal, and the state's PFA. Uh, the chapter also includes information about the Round 9A population forecast to 2045, which are the basis for the projections for the water and sewer planning in this document. Uh, the physical maps remain unchanged from the 2017 triennial review, but the population forecast, density, land use, zoning, and institutional maps have all been updated this go around. Next slide. Now we get into the meat of the, uh, document. So Chapter 3 gets into the water supply plan. And it doesn't change a whole lot between reviews. Uh, the three main, just to give you a brief background, there's three main sources of water in the county. Areas outside the Erdal are generally supplied by groundwater for individual private wells and small community well systems, which are mostly private with two exceptions noted above, meaning Phoenix and Sunnybrook. And the largest source of water is provided by the Baltimore Metropolitan Water System, or the public system, as it's commonly known. Uh, the water system is owned, operated, and maintained by Baltimore City, but the county is responsible for the rehabilitation of pipelines and water storage tanks within the county and manages the engineering and construction of some major facilities within the county. The system is shared with the neighboring counties of Howard, Anarundel, Hartford, and Carroll, and of course Baltimore City. Baltimore, Howard, and Anarundel County all have agreements with the city to purchase filtered water, while Hartford and Carroll County have agreements to purchase raw water. Uh, copies of these agreements are in the appendices in Part 2 of the online documents, and those don't change year to year. Uh, Anarundel County no longer uses water from the Baltimore system, but still has an active agreement with the city should they want to purchase water again in the future. Next. On the main components of the water system, uh, there's three raw water reservoirs, including Pretty Boy, Lock Raven, and Liberty, which are all owned by the city. We also have access to the Susquehanna River as an alternative for raw water during periods of drought. Um, and that was last used in the 90s, I believe. Uh, water flows by gravity in large tunnels and pipelines from the raw water sources to one of three water treatment plants in the city. Those are Montebello 1 and 2 and Ashburton. The treated water is then pumped to various pressure zones around the service area by one of our 21 pumping stations to one of our eight reservoirs and/or 20 elevated storage tanks to then be distributed to customers. There are 13 zones of service and over 2,200 miles of pipeline in the county. Next slide. So the past several triennial reviews have shown that water usage in the system is pretty consistent and even trending downward slightly with population increases. Uh, back in 2011, uh, the county was using 89 million gallons from the Baltimore system. And most recently in 2019, uh, fiscal report, um, we were down to 79 million gallons. But overall, it's been pretty consistent. Next slide. Table 3 is kind of the main item that changes each year or each triennial. Um, and it uses projections from the Round 9A population forecast that I mentioned earlier and the 2003 central system report. Uh, the 2003 report has been our water planning document, but recent data suggests that water usage is not progressing as fast as we expected, as you can kind of see from the past several triennials. Uh, this is due partly from a loss of industry in the county, residential use not picking up as much as anticipated, and consumers being more aware of water conservation and using low-flow showerheads and toilets. Uh, based on the historical data, the 2003 central system report, empowerment and safe yield data, engineering judgment, and that the service area is generally located within the Erdal, we believe that the existing facilities should be able to support future growth through 2045. And then lastly, Chapter 3 also includes the county budget for, um, future water main projects, and those are listed by zone. Next slide. The last, uh, big chapter in the triennial is about the sewage plan. And Baltimore County is comprised of septic systems and the Baltimore County Sanitary Sewer System, or the Public Sewer System, as it's more commonly known. Uh, septic systems are predominantly located outside of the Erdal with some exceptions. Uh, there's approximately 36,000 septic systems in the county with approximately 5,000 of them inside the Erdal and the existing sewer service area. Baltimore County's sewage collection system handles the majority of the sewage throughout the county. Um, and the system is owned, operated, and maintained by the county within the county limits. Uh, this also includes the Richel Manor wastewater treatment plant in Kingsville. Uh, Baltimore City owns, operates, and maintains the much larger Patapsco and Back River wastewater treatment plants, which accept flows from surrounding Baltimore, Howard, Anarundel County, and Baltimore City. And again, copies of these sewer agreements, uh, between the city and neighboring counties are included in the appendices. Next slide. The main components of the sewage system, um, sanitary sewer system is comprised of 120 pumping stations and 23 different sewer sheds. A discussion of each sewer shed, including its location, major components, pump flow, existing conditions, and proposed projects are included in this chapter. Uh, within each sewer shed, the county is responsible for the maintenance and rehabilitation of over 2,000 miles of, uh, gravity sewer main and over 160 miles of pressure sewer pipes. Next slide. Uh, table 9A for the Back River Wastewater Treatment Plant and 9B for the Patapsco Wastewater Treatment Plant depict the expected flows based on the forecasted population projections. The flows are expected to remain relatively consistent based on historical flow data, and both treatment plants are expected to support future growth through 2045. I mean, these tables are large and have lots of data year to year, which is why they're not included in the presentation, but they're readily available in the document online. And then lastly, Chapter 4 also includes information about the county's budget for planned sewer projects. Next slide. Just to kind of wrap it up, um, the last two portions of the triennial are the maps and appendices. The maps with the water supply and sewage plan designations follow the aforementioned chapters, and they cover the entire county and reflect changes resulting from any emergency or annual cycle amendments. Um, and as I mentioned earlier, the appendices are in Part 2 of the document. The content remains unchanged, but I did add some divider pages this year between the various documents just to make them a little bit easier to navigate. Next slide. And that concludes my summary of the 2020 triennial review. Thank you for your time, and if there's any questions today or later before the vote, I'm happy to answer them.
Oh, you're muted.
There we go. Got to remember to unmute. Thank you, Ms. Strile.
Sure.
Is Ms. Icoats also presenting or just answering any questions for board members?
She's here to answer any questions for board members.
Very good. All right. Do the board members have any questions? At this moment, we do not have anyone signed up to testify on the triennial review. Any questions from board members? Okay. Well, since we do not, and if there are no further questions from board members, I want to thank you to the staff for your presentation. The information that we've received will be taken into consideration when the board votes on this recommendation, which is tentatively scheduled for October the 15th at our next board meeting. All right, we'll move to the second item for, um, our hearing this evening. The definition for dormitories in the Baltimore County zoning regulations. Next item, testimony on the proposed definition for dormitories in the Baltimore County zoning regulations. Um, at the board's September 17th, 2020 meeting, Mr. Joseph Fraker from the Department of Planning presented an overview of a follow-up staff report on the definition for dormitories to the Baltimore County zoning regulations. Mr. Fraker is here to further present on the proposed definition of dormitories to the board. After Mr. Fraker, uh, has finished his presentation, I will call on those who have registered to testify on this topic. Please join me in welcoming Mr. Fraker. And Mr. Fraker, are you there? I saw him earlier.
He's there.
Yep, he is here.
Hello, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Little feedback, but we can hear you now. I will go unmute.
Okay, I'm sorry about that.
Joseph, do you have two devices on at your location?
There we go. I'm sorry about that. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the planning board. As you know, the county council passed Resolution 7319 on June 3rd, 2019, directing the planning board to consider the conversion of ground-level commercial space to residential units and dormitories. The resolution cited expanding enrollment at Towson University and other nearby colleges resulting in an increase in demand for housing as justification for their request to this board. The council requested the planning board report back its recommendations. In the previous report to the planning board that was directly in response to that resolution, staff recommended that a definition for dormitory be added to the Baltimore County zoning regulations. In response to that recommendation, planning staff facilitated a series of stakeholder advisory committee meetings over the summer to address the issue. By reading the report in front of you and attending this meeting, the planning board will learn how Baltimore County currently regulates dormitories, examine how other jurisdictions regulate dormitories and student housing, and get a sense for what was discussed in the stakeholder sessions and how the stakeholders came to their recommendations. Next slide, please. For the stakeholder sessions, planning staff sought input from community organizations with a known interest working on related issues, like the Towson Communities Alliance and Greater Towson Committee, the university community, including Towson, UMBC, Goucher College, and other interested parties. In addition, we had multiple planning staff members in attendance. It should be noted that student housing developers and students from nearby colleges were not able to join the sessions despite efforts to obtain those voices. Next slide, please. To maximize participation, staff held WebEx meetings on Wednesday evenings for approximately one hour each. In the first few sessions, stakeholders were called on individually to offer their comments, while more of an informal approach was taken for the final two sessions. Next slide, please. In the first session, staff introduced the goals and scope for the committee and brief, a brief history of dormitories and student housing in the United States. Staff then facilitated a discussion on themes to focus on for developing a dormitory definition. Staff introduced a list of priority themes for the stakeholders to consider, like neighborhood compatibility, property management, and parking. Through the initial discussion, stakeholders added accessibility, affordability, and conversion of ground-level retail space to the list. Security and having convenient pickup and drop-off locations were also mentioned, but not included as specific themes. This list would inform how the group analyzed the regulations from other jurisdictions. In Session 2, staff presented five case studies from jurisdictions that regulate dormitories and student housing in different ways. These include the suburban jurisdictions of College Park, Maryland, Arlington, Virginia, and Cobb County, Georgia, as well as the city of Madison, Wisconsin, and the smaller town of Auburn, Alabama. All of these locations have large student populations with students living in off-campus buildings. Some, including Auburn and Cobb County, have developed precise regulations for regulating privately-owned and operated off-campus student housing, while Arlington and College Park have not. Madison has strict regulations for dormitories, but only for buildings organized and owned by principal institutions. Overall, what the case studies show is that there is not one way to regulate off-campus housing, and that while dormitory is defined in many of the jurisdictions, it is not the principal term for regulating more modern off-campus student housing buildings. In many of the jurisdictions like Arlington and College Park, off-campus housing is regulated as just multifamily development, potentially limiting the ability of these areas to regulate the use. Next slide, please. After looking at these variations, staff examined Cobb County more closely for how it regulates purpose-built student housing. Cobb County is similar to Baltimore County in some respects in that it is located just outside of Atlanta, has a population of just under 800,000, has a large public university in Kennesaw State University, as well as, yeah, several downtown centers similar to Towson. Overall, it is suburban in character. This slide shows how Cobb County defines this use. They have additional supplemental regulations that address many of the attributes that are as mentioned as being important. These, these included in Appendix 1 of, these, these are included in Appendix 1 of this report. Overall, though, design and neighborhood context were important, with things like lighting and noise abatement required. Location and proximity requirements were also important, which include ensuring buildings have principal access to arterial or major collector rooms and that buildings are located in regional activity centers, which is similar to a mixed-use district or business district. Auburn regulates this use similar to Cobb County. They just use the term private dormitory instead of purpose-built student housing. Auburn also has locational requirements and designate which zoning districts private dormitories are permitted in. They also subject all private dormitories to special development standards, although there are not dormitory-specific requirements. With both of these jurisdictions, the definitions give regulators a more precise way to regulate the specific use. Next slide. So if we look at the case study jurisdiction in relation to the stakeholder identified attributes to include in the regulations, we see that they all hit on some of the attributes. Cobb County and Madison match the majority of the themes mentioned, while Auburn hit on four and College Park and Arlington hit on three of the themes. Again, though, in the cases of College Park and Arlington, the student housing, like what is being developed in Towson and what regulators in Cobb County and Auburn specifically defined, is not classified as dormitory use, so it is more of an apples-to-oranges comparison. I will briefly provide examples of specific regulations that fall underneath these categories. In Madison, under the neighborhood compatibility category would be, and this is in Appendix 1 under letter D for the supplemental regulations for Madison, quote, "All new construction or additions to existing buildings shall be compatible with the scale and character of the surround use, to the extent practical." An appropriate transition area between the use and adjacent properties may be required using landscaping, screening, and other site improvements consistent with the character of the neighborhood." For Cobb County, under the design category, which is letter F in the supplemental regulations, they have, quote, "Sites shall be designed with lighting that does not spill over into abutting properties and is the minimum to provide security for residents of multifamily housing developments." And lastly, under the property management category, under P, under letter P, they have onsite management shall be required twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. So this just provides a few examples of how we filled out attributes chart. Next slide, please. In Session Three, we also looked at how the Baltimore County zoning regulations currently regulate dormitories. As mentioned previously, dormitories are not defined, even though they are mentioned throughout the zoning regulations. In this chart and the map on the next slide, we get a general idea that dormitories are allowed in most areas inside the urdle. Areas where they are allowed by right generally follow the commercial business corridors or downtown centers like Towson. Next slide, please. As you can see, the current regulations are fairly permissive regarding locations where dormitories are allowed at present time. The orange areas on the map are where dormitories are allowed by special exception, and the green areas in the more highly-traveled business sections of the county allow dormitories by right. Next slide, please. In the final session, stakeholders reviewed an initial definition and supplemental regulations for purpose-built student housing proposed by staff based on previous feedback. The stakeholders then offered modifications during the session. Please note that the stakeholders focused on what falls under the purpose-built student housing category, even though the exact term at that time had not been chosen. The definition on this slide is the one under Recommendation Three on page ten in the report, and is staff's recommendation based on our interpretation of the stakeholder sessions and the needs of Baltimore County. I will now go over specific items in the definition. Firstly, we try to make a clear distinction between student housing on campus and student housing developments off-campus. Purpose-built student housing can be either owned by an institution or by a private company. We wanted to keep either possibility open as they have a variety of ownership and management arrangements. Importantly, the definition includes a requirement for a management plan that would address some of the concerns brought up by stakeholders, such as security, parking, transportation, and code of conduct. It was noted in the stakeholder sessions that having a thoughtfully crafted management plan can be an effective way to address these concerns in lieu of making specific rules in the zoning regulations. The management plan would be reviewed by permits, approvals, and inspections, and would be subject to planning board approval. To address concerns around design and neighborhood compatibility, the stakeholders felt that all buildings should have to go in front of the county's design review panel. This would apply to buildings outside of the designated design review panel areas, as well as areas already within them. For the issue of ground-level retail, stakeholders preferred that buildings have lower-level retail on the first floor, but not to the point where it might make leasing and space too difficult, leasing the space too difficult, like requiring where there is not existing precedent for it. As transportation was a big concern, a requirement for a shuttle stop and space for alternative transportation parking requirements was recommended. It was also important that there be a certain level of affordability to these buildings, and that stakeholders wanted a percentage of the units to be affordable to students receiving financial aid. For the actual definition for dormitory, which was the original and smaller topic of conversation for these sessions, staff proposes the definition here, which sets out a fairly broad encapsulation of dormitories in the county, but does not propose any underlying changes to the BCCR. The only addition here is a simple adding of the definition. All zones where dormitories are permitted would remain the same. Next slide, please. By creating a new definition for purpose-built student housing, zones will need to be identified for where this use should be permitted. The stakeholders discussed this in detail in the sessions. Overall, they did not like the idea of having strict locational requirements, like putting a radius surrounding an institution, like what was done in Madison, Wisconsin, where they put a quarter-mile radius requirement from the principal institution for these buildings. But they wanted to make sure they were in accessible locations in the county. So to briefly recap, the Department of Planning set out at the beginning of the stakeholder sessions to simply add a definition for dormitory. Through the input of the sessions, this evolved into related, but somewhat larger task of coming up with a way to regulate modern off-campus student housing developments. As mentioned, this project originated as an outgrowth from Resolution seventy-three nineteen last year. It is our intention that this report can help provide the planning board and the county council with an understanding of these important stakeholder sessions and the conclusions they come to. Next slide, please. And thank you for your time, and we can now take any questions that you might have. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Fraker, for that presentation. Very informative in taking us through how we got to where we are with the report that was prepared. Are there any questions from any of the board members from Mr. Fraker?
I do, Mr. Chair.
You are recognized, Mr. Heckman.
Just a couple of questions. It looked like the report planning is recommending three options. Is it our charge as the board to pick one of the options before we send it on to council? Or are we leaving it for the council to figure out which one's the best option?
So as we, and we could discuss that this evening, or we can discuss it on the fifteenth, after everyone had an opportunity to digest what Mr. Fraker has presented to us and to read the report. But we have a number of options. We can forward the report to the council just as it is, or we can ask the planning board to add additional clarification as to the desires of the planning board. So this is a night to ask those questions, and in my mind, we can make some decisions about how we move forward in the recommendations on the fifteenth.
Mr. Chair, Jeff.
Yes, go ahead, Jeff.
We had sent out a staff report that had the three options, and it wasn't the final version. There was another version that came out, I'd say probably within the hour. It had the version that had a recommendation. Of the three that was developed with the stakeholders, staff had a specific recommendation that Joe presented tonight.
So that one came out in September the seventeenth at about two forty-two, Mr. Heckman. That was the final.
Oh, oh, okay. I downloaded the one we got last week.
Well, I believe in the report, it actually provides all three of the options. It's number three in the report that staff recommends. We wanted to provide the first two options for county council to look at. But it's staff's recommendation to have number three be... That is our recommendation.
Right, and that was what you presented this evening.
Exactly.
Part of that, Mr. Heckman, is to make sure that the input from the stakeholders was represented in total with the staff making its recommendation to the planning board.
Okay. I have another question, if I may. Our original charge from council to solve a problem regarding the conversion of ground-floor commercial in mixed-use buildings that somebody wants to convert to dormitories. How does this recommendation address that question?
I was in that committee, and they would like that if possible, but sometimes it's not possible to make retail on the first floor.
No, I understand. Yeah, I think Mr. Heckman's question is, you know, quite frankly, we were given a charge. How does the option three, the recommendation that's coming from the staff, address that initial charge that related to housing on the first floor?
Yeah.
So if I could answer that, this report is in, it's a a follow-up to the report that we previously sent to the planning board last October. And in that report, we specifically addressed the ground-level floor issue. However, within that report, county staff recommended that we add a definition of dormitory to the Baltimore County zoning regulations because it is not currently defined. The language within that resolution was a little bit unclear. This was our best attempt to get at that in this subsequent report.
Okay, very good. So this is in addition to the work that we had done before?
Yes, that's right.
Okay.
But what was the answer? Can they put ground-level dormitory?
Well, I think that, this is Jeff again, our first report highlighted because of where they wanted to add dormitories, it was not clear by a land use definition whether the residential units were actually apartments or dorms. And the way to solve that was to create new definitions as to whether residential uses are either for residents or for students. So hopefully with this clarification, it will solve that question.
So a dormitory does not require retail on the first floor, correct? By definition. That's correct, right, Jeff?
Yes.
Right, the current zoning definition does not have that requirement.
Okay. And reading this, a dormitory is a building that must be located on institutional campus. How does we define on an institutional campus? Is it strictly, you know, if it is owned by the institution, it makes it part of the campus? Or, and I'll use... No, I won't. ABC University owns land in Sparks, Maryland. That's not necessarily an institutional campus. How do we define that?
I believe if I can answer that, that would be included as as part of the campus, although that... I don't know if Jeff wants to elaborate on this. That was my interpretation.
Yeah, I'll go with what Joe said.
So as long as the institution owns the land, it becomes a, it naturally becomes a part of the campus, but that would not allow for a private investor to develop a parcel that is adjacent to.
This is Pete. Yes, that's basically it. I mean, it's almost dormitory becomes an accessory use to the institutional uses that are on those campuses. So that's what we're clarifying, and that's why we specifically identified zoning classifications where the purposely-built units would be versus, you know, where dormitories otherwise identified throughout the zoning regulations. So, yes, Mr. Chairman, you have that correct.
Thank you. All right. Any other questions?
So we would not be able to have student housing downtown Towson unless Towson University bought the building?
Well, that's what the purpose-built student housing definition is for. That would apply to private investors owning their own land or leasing space and then building a dorm. Well, it wouldn't be called a dorm. It would be student housing. And in that case, I don't know if we've still, we've cleared up the retail aspect. The desire was that in a more business-oriented location, we would want retail on the first floor to fit in with where the building is. But if someone built a building in, say, Cockeysville, where all the apartments are, you know, retail on the first floor may not work there. So we didn't want to make that a requirement, but only where the surrounding environment would be conducive to have that.
Thanks, Paul, but I still need to know, can somebody take a building in Towson and put student housing on the first floor?
At this time, I believe they can.
Okay, that's, thanks.
I mean, Jeff Lee, can you clarify that for me?
Yeah, because that's not my reading of it.
So I think the answer, once again, if you read the purpose-built student housing, the answer is maybe.
Right.
So the answer is maybe. You have to go through a process to develop purpose-built student housing, right? It is clear that the desire is to maintain retail on the first floor. However, there is a method for you to have approved something different than that. That's the way I read it.
I'm looking at it, and I hope I'm looking at the right version. It's that ten seventeen, twenty twenty. And on page ten, under purpose-built student housing, it says, "If located in a commercial zoning district, the ground floor shall include retail and/or coffee space if the majority of the rest of the street has ground-level office rent retail."
That's correct. That was our recommendation based off of the stakeholder sessions. That we would try to include ground-level retail where possible because that is definitely the preferred use on the ground-level floor. So we'd want to retain that. If it's not possible, then there can be exceptions made potentially.
Right, because Kathy, the final clause of that, though, is unless it can be demonstrated that it would not be viable.
But it only applies to the commercial district, the shall.
Kathy, I was in those meetings, and that's what they said.
Right.
All right. So I'm going to suggest we all stew on this a little bit. If there is some wording that we would like to offer up, we can do that now, or we can do that before we take our vote at our next meeting. If there is some concern, I think we understand the intent. Are there any concerns with the definition of purpose-built student housing as has been recommended? Okay.
Can I ask one question?
Sure.
I guess, Kathy, so on that same page, Regulation Four says all buildings shall have a transit stop. Does that mean at the building specifically or within some approximate? I mean, if you had two buildings each other, would each of them have to have a stop? I'm not quite sure how to translate that.
Well, I think that might be up to the county council if they choose to act on this document. They may choose to not do anything, but they could put the wording in as far as what that transit stop means. You know, I think it would be You know, I think it would be perfectly reasonable to have one transit stop if it's next to two different buildings. You know, but I think that's a detail that the council would have to write the legislation for.
I was curious if, when this was being drafted, I mean, what was the?
And Scott, Towson University is very good at making multiple stops where need be for their students. They've done a great job.
They do have shuttle buses that, that stop at multiple apartment building, private apartment buildings, not just their, their own. And the intent was to reduce the need for the tenants to own cars. And if they could, you know, use bikes or hop on a shuttle bus of some sort, you know, the Towson Circulator Bus is coming maybe later next year. So, you know, we would rather not have a huge influx of cars.
And Towson University has done a good job with that. They, they run a good show.
I was just trying to understand, it's sort of like Kathy with the shall. It made it sound like it had to be at the building. I was just curious what kind of flexibility that is.
I think part of that is if one of these purpose-built student housing developments were to go in and say, Cockeysville or, you know, somewhere else in the county, Dundalk, you would want to have a transit stop that is, that is within very close proximity to, to that building. Since, as you can see on, on the map, you know, the stakeholders didn't want to limit the, the locations where these buildings can go to such an extent where it would like just be in Towson, for instance. Even though as, as of right now, the only two buildings that would, I think, come down and under this definition would be the two in Towson that have currently been constructed.
I guess I'm still a little confused. So, so we're basically, people could build a student housing right now with, by right. And, and we're taking that right away at this point. So is that what you're saying? By doing this?
We're, how would I would say, I don't think we're taking any rights away. I think it's providing some clarity because today, if I build, if I were to build under the principles of a dormitory, right, that can only be done as we described here on campus by the institution.
Right, but I could build, I could build an apartment building and rent to students and not have an issue with that.
I could do that today. However, I would need to meet what would be multifamily, multi-unit housing. I'd have to meet the zoning requirements of a multi-unit housing facility.
Jeff, what did Towson Row come under for the 700 student housing unit? Was that a dormitory or what did they list that as?
I don't remember.
It came through the PUD process.
Right, right.
It wasn't a PUD. Towson Row was not a PUD. It was a, this is Jennifer Nugent. It was a conventional development that went through the full development process. And the student housing or student apartments is what they call them.
Student apartments.
It's part of the overall mixed-use development plan.
Okay, so student apartments aren't regulated in this at all?
Well, I think they would by drawing this law up. I think we would, we would be putting restrictions on people's ability to develop. It's a way to stop student development or housing development or restricted.
Yeah, Chris, can you put up the chart that shows where all dormitories are currently permitted and/or by special exception? I think that'll get to Mr. Warren's questions.
Which is everywhere inside the urble.
Pretty much.
Well, not by right, by special exception in most of the cases.
But they, they wouldn't be under this.
Well, the only things where exception.
I'm just making the case. I'm not saying that it's right that they do have that. I'm just saying that.
When you, when you look at those two maps, can you go back to, and put up the map where they are? So you could do this today.
And then show where the purposely built student housing map is.
Okay. But that does not change where you could put a dormitory?
No.
Right, because we've got two different definitions. So that, so if you go back to the map, the definition of a dormitory remains the same, correct?
That's correct. Dormitory, dormitories would remain pretty much as they are. There'd be no changes to where they, they can locate. As we said earlier, dormitories are not currently defined. So this task originally was kind of set out to define dormitories. But that, that was as a result of that previous staff report, which was a result of the council resolution. That original council resolution was not, not entirely clear with its language. So this was our interpretation of where to go. And part of this report by leaving the options as we did in the end is to give the county council our best kind of guess for what, where they may want to take this.
So Todd, to that point, as we define dormitories, those dormitories would still be permitted, dormitories would still be permitted as you see on this map. That would not change. But we have further defined, we have further defined what purpose-built student housing is, which is the area for private development, which would then suggest if you are a private developer. And right now, we did not, we don't have anything in the code that describes purpose-built student housing. And so there is no, we wouldn't be restricting or reducing the opportunity. We're redefining or we're defining the opportunity. Is that a fair way of describing this?
Mr. Phillips, I have to disagree that it does because by special exception, they could build apartments that students are dwelled in and anywhere inside the urble with a special exception. And with this, they will not be able to do so. It is not, it is, it is a reduction in people's land rights. It is what it is. I'm not saying that's wrong. I'm just saying that, just need to be honest about it and say that we are doing that.
Mr. Warren, there's, there's three, three tenants, I'll say. The map that you see up there now is where dormitories are allowed or allowed by special exception. The key point in the definition of a dormitory is that it has to be tied to an institutional use. The second point is if you wanted to build an apartment building to rent to students, you can still get approval for an apartment building in the appropriate zone. There's no, no limitation to that. You just have to adhere to the requirements of an apartment building that has probably more parking requirements than you would need for a student housing. This new definition adds, is a new introduction to add the purpose-built specifically for dorms on private land. So the first two options are existing and remaining.
I just, I thought I heard in there that you would have to change and have for student housing in an apartment, you would have to adhere to additional parking spaces and stuff like that. If I'm mishearing that, then I apologize.
No, apartments are still allowed in zones that they are currently allowed in. Whether the operator chooses to rent to students or not, that's his business model's decision.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Fraker? All right. Well, thank you all for all of your comments and your questions. All of these things will be taken into consideration. The board votes on its recommendation, which is tentatively scheduled for October the 15th, 2020. And at this time, if there are no further comments.
I'd like to make one comment, please.
Sure.
I would just like to thank Mr. Fraker and also Laurie Hay for facilitating these sessions to discuss dormitories. I think it went very well and they really have summarized the discussion in this draft document very well. So I want to thank them.
Well, thank you and thank you, Mr. Hartman, for participating and enlightening us. And thank you, Ms. Nancy Heffer, for participating and enlightening us with your firsthand participation. Okay, well, thank you all very much. The public hearing is now adjourned and thank you for your attendance.
Good night.
Good night.